Coming to the regular Carefree Town Council this Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. All this meeting to order, a roll call, Candace, I believe all the members of the council are here. Anton, would you please leave us in your flash?
We're looking for the flag.
Yes.
Oh, we are.
Who's the flag?
It's, it's.
I'm just going to go around the stage like.
Where is that?
Hold on.
There we go, because we buy it for $22.95.
Is it a crime? You might have sticks around. You do realize that the project stands on nation and the ground. You will be able to clarify the details. Okay, the consent agenda. Item number one, approval of the March 16th, 2021 joint meeting of the Carefree Town Council and the Board of Directors of the Carefree Arizona Utilities Community Facilities District. Item number two, I believe we held. We'll put that on the next meeting. Item number three, acceptance into the public record of the May 2022 paid bills. And item number four, acceptance of the cash receipts and disbursements report for April of 2022. Anybody council member who has questions or comments? There are none, we look for motion to approve items one, three, and four. Motion made at second, and all those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? Okay, those items on the consent agenda, one, three, and four are approved. Call to the public. Uh, we would ask, we have a number of sheets here. And those uh would be limited to three minutes each, please. Ms. Evelyn Johnson, Director of the Cave Creek Museum, please come right up to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. As Mayor pointed out, I'm the Executive Director of the Cave Creek Museum. We have finished off an incredible year. Um, and I want to shed a little bit of light on, good light on COVID before I say anything further. Um, we experienced a tremendous amount of visitors. We exceeded 10,000, which is a huge amount even previous to COVID. But I think part of that COVID made people want to discover their own community. And we've had a great response to that. Like I said, we've had over 10,000 people come into the museum. And that doesn't include the Arizona gold mining experience. That pulled in over 100 people every time it ran. So it was kind of a, we didn't know what to do with crowds. It was a nice problem to have. I'm, we have closed for the season, even though our doors are closed to the public. Our back door is always open. Um, and you're welcome to come and chat with us, make recommendations, or ask questions. And as long as you don't mind things not in the perfect condition that you would expect in a museum, we'll even give you a tour of what is going on. So I have our annual report, may I approach?
Certainly. Thank you so much. Do you have any extras for some of the people?
Uh, I think I have one for.
Okay.
One extra. But. They are available on our website. And of course, if anybody heard a call and say, I want a copy, we'll print you a copy if you'll come by and pick it up. Like I said, our back door is always open. Thank you for this opportunity to tell you.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it, keep up the great work. Diane Roth.
Hello, Diane Roth. I am a resident of Carefree. I'm the mayor, vice mayor of the town council. Um, this is in reference to item five. There's a key weakness throughout Carefree. I'm whether the township maintains its current status as a quiet and charming small town. Our rush headlong with commercial development of the few remaining open parcels in order to attract tourists and other non-residents who pay sales tax here and thereby subsidize the town offering. The town of Carefree has been on notice for several years regarding the authority automatic aid. Current automatic aid participants have publicly stated that Carefree has quite deliberately chosen rural metro for inspiring emergency medical services with the full knowledge of rural metros' limited capability. In effect, requiring neighboring communities to subsidize another critical line item in our budget. Who has the town hired providing qualified advice on the issues of fire emergency services? A question to be answered. Carefree residents that are part of the water transition want to know that they will not, will not be receiving the same Cave Creek water and only a bill from their new water company. The documents provided to bondage purchasers assert that the town could resume, resume its former arrangements to have Cave Creek water, three Carefree cap water, in order to provide water to the new service area. Is this the plan for the near future? This huge expenditure and underpays has done without asking Carefree water for the review. Then the town aggressively sued its own citizens who seized land for water tank, spending millions in the process. The open space eminent domain initiative will give a voice and vote back to people where it belongs. How can a town the size of Carefree legitimately commit to spend tens of millions of dollars on a project that's never asked to be? Instead, the town government said trust us, we don't matter. The town hired well-known election firm of Cooper Smith brought in months ago to pay the firm significant amounts for services related to initiatives based on the memo line in the town's checks. What are the initiatives the town has hired this firm to work on? Another question. Clearly does not support any of the initiatives. A limit of two-year terms will bring new ideas, check the power of entrenched government, and bring fresh new faces to the board of office. Faces like Peter Sample, one of the neighbor council candidates, Beth and Lex, Beth Martin, and Duverdick. Some current council members, Hatcher, and Quayle have made donations to support an alternative four-year stagger from limited initiative. This is supremely ironic since both were on the town council. It does nothing to uphold clearly expressed privilege. Thank you.
Yes, I was going to ask, because we received this letter from Officer Dado earlier today. Um, Mike Davin.
Good evening, Carefree Town Council. Mike Davin, I'm a resident for two years. My wife, Helen, and I moved here from Chicago two years ago. It's a beautiful town, especially coming from the city of Lake Chicago. Simply put, we moved here for many of the reasons that are cited on your town's website. Residents cite the natural beauty of the snoring desert, the clean air, less traffic, peace and tranquility as the top reasons to live in Carefree. That's why we moved here. Our house and dozens more like it in Carefree that have a direct southwest line of sight to the Hampton Inn have a slight problem. The excessively bright lights of the Hampton Inn at night is an eyesore and affronts the beauty of the snoring desert and the dark skies appeal of beautiful Carefree. We simply ask that something be done, something be done to reduce the light pollution of the Hampton Inn at night. Thank you.
Thank you. That being the three that we have received, we'll close the call to the public. I would make a comment on the motive in that of Don Roth's letter. There are a number of factual layers in it, but rather than get into those, let us just say. Let me give you an example. The town hired the well-known election firm of Cooper Smith Brockman. The town has a general attorney who handles contracts, and we use specialists in areas. We don't deal with initiatives all the time. I can't recall the one that we have dealt with. So we go to the best people that are out there and we deal with them. That is why we do those types of things. So a lot of these things that are, that are mentioned here are, are not derived or benchmarked in deep understanding of what the situation was. But let us not get into that any further. Let us go on to item number six, current events. Dr. Monroe, we might ask yourself, if you don't know. Dr. Monroe is the superintendent of the Cave Creek Unified School District to which our students go and is doing an absolutely outstanding job, and we love working with him.
Thank you for that kind word, Mayor Peterson. Uh, Mayor Peterson and the council members. My name is Orville Mill. I'm a member of the audience and the superintendent of schools. Very proud of the Cave Creek Unified School District. I'm simply here tonight to thank the town of Carefree, for the town council for their continued support of our schools, our teachers, and our students. In our strategic plan, one of our priorities is employee excellence. And the Carefree Town Council helps us to recognize our stellar employees and their performance through the Carefree Cures Program. For those who are not aware, the Carefree Cures Program is a recognition event for our Cave Creek staff. The town, the town council sponsors us by annual recognition award given to a staff member at each of our seven schools. The nominations are made by the principal at each site, and the recipients are honored at both the Carefree Town Council meeting we've been here and also recognized at a Cave Creek Unified School District governing board meeting where they receive a pin, a Carefree Cures pin, and a certificate and a gift card. In addition, we appreciate very much the opportunity for our students to participate in Veterans Day ceremonies, the Memorial Day event that we recently had with the Veteran Heritage Project, with the Boy Scouts of America. In addition, our students are able to participate here at the Sanderson Lincoln Pavilion and the Desert Foothills Theater and other performances and events. I want to specifically recognize and thank you, Mayor Peterson, Vice Mayor Crane, council members Delicio, Hatcher, and Quayle, who I individually have been able to rub shoulders with. I appreciate their support of our district. They've attended our business partner breakfast and other district that's supporting our staff and our students. Finally, I spoke to Mr. Neese, spoke to Gary at the Memorial Day event, and we may be coming to invite you guys to a first annual joint town council, a joint council meeting with our Cave Creek governing board, with the Cave Creek Town Councils, whereas as well as the Carefree Town Council. And so as I work out details, I'll get with Gary, but you guys will be invited to be a part of that most likely in the late fall and early winter hosted by the school district. So we can continue to demonstrate our partnership, working together and living together in the same community. And I look forward to working with the Carefree Town Council, and I appreciate your support of our district. So thank you.
Thank you. We enjoy working with you and all of the teachers and others involved in the season. Thank you for coming. One of the other areas under current events, this is election season. And there's been some question about placement, number, and size, and what they say of political signs. So I might ask our, our town clerk, Candice French, to discuss this a little bit. These are the same rules that apply to everyone out there. And they're very busy taking down a number of these signs, which were memoriously put up by people from throughout the state as well as locally.
Mayor and council, I look forward to with actual citations for laws. If everything is on our website, of course, anybody's welcome to contact me either by email or telephone if they have any questions. Um, it is now campaign season, the signs are going up. Just letting everybody know, I received a lot of phone calls, concerns, complaints about signs. We do have state law that sets forth how the signs are formatted, their size, their size, and what goes on those signs, as well as we have a town code that limits where those signs can be placed. So if anybody has any questions and mistakes are made, our staff gives a 24-hour notice, which is pretty much a statewide standard. We try and let everyone know, and that's why that contact information is so important on your signs. So reach out, we'll reach out to each candidate, whether they're a statewide candidate or a local candidate or a candidate from a neighboring municipality, and let them know if their signs are, are in the wrong place. Otherwise, we will pull them, we're required to, but again, we try and reach out to everyone. Let them know if those signs are at town hall and we're more than welcome that be available so those signs can be picked up. Um, the other challenge that I've had, which is unusual this year, is there is a state law that prohibits any theft or vandalism of signs. And I've had several complaints and emails regarding seeing this happening. So I do remind everybody and urge all the candidates to be respectful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anything for council members beyond that? There are none, item number seven, review, discussion, and possible action to approve resolution 2022-12, appointing the town clerk, Candice French Contreras, as the chief financial officer for the town of Carefree. This is something we do each year, and I would ask Candice to please explain it.
Yes, Mayor and Council, as you're aware, we spent about six months on the budget process, and we've just got that finalized. And now we're going to drag Joe back into the office, and he's going to start our audit. Um, that audit process is an independent auditing firm that comes in, setting just town and regular independent audit every year. Part of that is the state auditor general requires that we have a chief financial officer, and that's historically in a town our size, that is the town clerk, because it's a bifurcated process. And I'm required to file the audit findings and forms with the auditor general each year. They require the resolution language that you see before you. Um, that's why the format's just a little bit different, that they require that exact format in order to meet their requirements. And I ask that the council review that and approve that resolution so that we can file those audit findings each year, including the upcoming fiscal year, which will go back to 2122. I'm available for any other questions, thank you.
Questions?
Comments from the council?
There are none, would accept the motion to approve resolution 2022-12, appointing Candice French Contreras, who is the town clerk, to also be the chief financial officer for the town of Carefree.
I'll read that motion.
Motion's been made, second. And second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed. Motion passes. Item number eight, review, discussion, and possible action to approve resolution 2022-10, and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract entitled Fire Protection and Emergency Medical Services Agreement in the town of Carefree and Rural Metro Corporation. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Neese, if we would to, to take us through this. But I would like to see some of these officers here. Uh, I can give them personal things. Carefree has been working with Rural Metro for 50 years now, perhaps even a bit longer than that. They have performed outstanding service. They've got a number of circumstances which have come together, which may force something different in the past. But these gentlemen have been extremely cooperative to assure the continued safety of the residents of Carefree in the interim time while we determine what is the best and then put it out to the options to the people of Carefree to vote on, rather proceed. But then, Mr. Neese.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Uh, before we look forward, let me take a peek backwards for some context. Over 15 years ago, a citizen committee was appointed by the town council to look at fire emergency services within the town of Carefree. And that citizen committee recommended that we enter into a master contract with Rural Metro for fire emergency services. Prior to that, that time, residents directly paid Rural Metro on average $750 through an independent contract that the residents had with Rural Metro. Today, that contract, if we didn't have this master contract with Rural Metro, would be valued at over $1,000. This master contract was paid for by raising the town's sales tax for retail product purchased within the town of Carefree. At that time, it was 2%. It was raised to 3%. In addition, the Lowe's Home Improvement Store was also approved by the community to help fund and offset that liability of that master contract. We needed reoccurring revenue to essentially pay for that master contract. So two things happened back then when we took over that master contract. The sales tax was increased by 1%, and Lowe's Home Improvement Store was approved. Today, after thousands of calls for assistance from our first responders at Rural Metro, we are looking towards the community's options to join the regional emergency dispatch system called Automatic Aid, and similar to the approach 15 years ago, ensure the town has reoccurring revenues stream to support this long-term commitment. When we went through the budget process, I had the budget dashboard. That dashboard indicated the reoccurring revenue and the reoccurring expenses. As you can see, there are about $7 million each. There's not much fat on the bone here in Carefree. We're rounding error when it comes down to some of these other neighboring communities. They have line items in their budget that are more than our entire operational budget. We run a lean operation, but if we're going to inherit this liability, we have to have that conversation with our residents so that they understand the commitment, the financial commitment. And it's not just one year. Cave Creek and their contract with Daisy Mountain has a 25-year contract with them. So it's not just one year. We have to look out over a longer horizon. So this will take some time. And as a result of that time and that analysis that is needed, the town council appointed a citizen committee once again, similar to the approach 15 years ago, to take a deep dive into automatic aid, mutual aid, our level of service. The result of that was a joint meeting of the town council and the Public Safety Advisory Committee. Some of those past members resolved that committee, but some of those past members are here tonight. One of the recommendations is a short-term contract, a bridge contract, so that we can continue to evaluate and have those discussions within this community to consider how we can design a solid plan to join automatic aid. How do we do it? What is the path? So it's not just shooting from your head and say, just do it. It's not flipping a switch. This has to be a planned effort. And that plan takes education and it takes facts. So we hire somebody who's been in the fire business for 40 years that knows our assets, knows what we invested in, to evaluate what we need to do to move up a notch and join that automatic aid partnership. So we have invested millions of dollars in assets. There's also other requirements that these mutual, or excuse me, automatic aid partners might place on us, capital investments. We want a brush truck. We want a tinder truck, or some other requirements. Those are capital investments that we have the budget for. And we have to understand from those automatic aid partners what they are, what are the all of those all-in costs. And it's not just those one-time costs. You have to plan those capital costs. They all have a life cycle to them. So it's putting a schedule to those respective items as well. In addition, there's reoccurring investments. We know if we join an existing automatic aid partner, it could be a million dollars more than what we pay Rural Metro today. That's a significant lift, once again, looking back at the budget that you consider tonight. How do we do that? So looking at those costs that will be outlined by that fire professional, also evaluating from a fiscal perspective, somebody who specializes in this throughout the state of Arizona, hiring them to evaluate our options. What are, what is our capacity to pay? How do we pay for this liability? This is not just one and done. Would you recommend using our capital reserves and not fund street improvements? That's one suggestion that somebody asked. Let's talk about it. Let's bet that in the public light. What does that mean? So this is a collaboration between the residents and the decision makers in the future. Those conversations will be had this fall. So that takes some time to cultivate those conversations and come up with those ultimate decisions and pathway to join automatic aid. So this is a citizen, it's a citizen driver, it should be citizen-driven. Uh, but this is a citizen-driven process, always has been. We incorporate citizen participation in everything that we do. I could go through anything that we have done in my 20 years here and talk about how the citizens work, about how we integrated them into that process, how we provided those opportunities. I can't force people to come here. I am thankful that we have a lot of people here tonight to listen to this. But at the end of the day, but we're not in the election season. I wish more people attend these council meetings, because this is how we vet these issues. This is what we always have done in my 20 years here. There's nothing hidden about this. So this is part of the citizen participation process. We will vet this in the public this fall and discuss those options with those experts, making those presentations, and then Q and A, so that we can cultivate some solutions for the town of Carefree. So that's the overall process that's coming up with the target of joining automatic aid um as, as soon as, as possible. Once again, the citizen committee recommended that we have a bridge contract with Rural Metro. Uh, obviously, once again, this is not like flipping a switch and, and you're done. This has to be an orchestrated effort. So there's a lot of things that go into making this change. And so in order to do that, we need a bridge contract. And that was part of the recommendations that the Public Safety Advisory Committee made. So looking at the contract, length of the term is essentially overall five years, but there's two terms within that. Uh, the initial term is 18 months. The contract expires at the end of this month. We're looking at the renewal in, in July, so that would be the beginning of, of the initial term. And that would end on January 24th. The idea behind that, those first 18 months, is to work on this initiative and have the citizens come to the table and participate in a process where they're informed about these facts associated with automatic aid and what they would support in doing so. And so that's what we hope to achieve in the 18 months. If we can't reconcile what the community wants to do, this contract would then renew on, on January 2024 and last another 42 months to June of 2027. Uh, so essentially a five-year contract. During that time, that doesn't mean that we don't continue the conversations. We can continue the conversations. And Rural Metro is a very supportive partner, so that they will support us throughout this transitional process. Or specifically with the fee structure, we're looking at a annual fee of 1.859 million, um, all the utilities to be paid by Rural Metro for the firehouse. Um, a $2,500 per month credit for the second fire company. If you recall, there was a fire company that Rural Metro had, A25, over in Cave Creek. They relocated over in Carefree. We now have two engine companies, our engine company and the engine company that was. We now have two engine companies, our engine company and the engine company that was previously over in Cave Creek. They're paying us uh, to house that there. The benefit is we have two engine companies now centrally located in Carefree. And they're paying us and it's a deduction. So that's that's certainly uh, uh, something that favors Carefree. There is a inflationary index on the second term. Um, based upon the local index for labor, that's the CPI UW based up Phoenix with a cap of two and a half percent. That's nothing I can nail down with Scottsdale or or Daisy Mountain. So this is something that we have negotiated uh, with the uh, Rural Metro and it. Helps us establish an expectation of what this contract will cost over the term of this agreement. Cave Creek does not have that certainty in their twenty-five-year contract with Daisy Mountain. That's one of the negotiation points that the public safety advisory committee outlined, one of the concerns that they outlined. And hopefully, if they are the partner in the future, it's something that we can negotiate and cooperate in I T K. But uh, we do have that with the Rural Metro contract. Uh, once again, Rural Metro um, has been servicing the community for over a half a century. That's a long time. They've serviced this area over a half a century. We have two engine companies within the firehouse with certified paramedics and E M Ts on each engine. The majority of the calls, this is the facts. And you look at most fire departments today, the majority of the calls aren't addressing fires. They're addressing the daily operations, which are medical emergencies. We have a paramedic and an E M T on each engine. We have two engine companies in Carefree. That's more than what Cave Creek has right now. And our engine company is centrally located, or excuse me, our firehouse is centrally located in Carefree to service the balance of our residents. The town also has an I G A with the State Department of Fire Street and Fire Management and the County Emergency Management. To address catastrophic events such as wildland fires. So what happened in Cave Creek, it wasn't the fire trucks that stopped that fire. It was the aerial attack. That was coordinated through these two agencies. That's what would happen in Carefree. We have those I G As in place already. We have our own fire code that allows for that. We, this is our fire department. This is the Carefree Fire Department. And finally, Rural Metro, as I stated earlier, is very supportive of the goal, become part of the automatic aid. Emergency dispatch system and are committed, as always, to provide uh, service to our residents. And that's just not regular service. That's exceptional service and if you had the unfortunate encounter of of of, you know, dealing with Rural Metro. That they're they're quality establishments. They they are quality firefighters. They are trained just like any other first responders are trained. They put on their pants the same way. Um, so we have a very qualified fire department, certified paramedics, certified E M Ts. Um, so rest assured, we do have a tangible fire department. Um, that being said, Mayor, you referred to the folks out in the audience. Uh, Tim Sol, uh, Chief Sol is head of operations uh, for Central Arizona. And one of the his statements in the past to you is the central operations, which is essentially Maricopa County. He covers a quarter of a million residents within Maricopa County. They have one of the largest fire departments within Maricopa County. They are a tangible organization. And have a tangible presence in Maricopa County. With him also is our new battalion chief, um, Chief Russell. Uh, Chief Russell came to us from Orange County and has worked as chief for other fire departments. So he understands how you work with other agencies and is well-versed in in essentially. Uh, working with those agencies and coordinating efforts uh, with other first responders. Uh, that being said, uh, once again, you have a resolution in front of you. Uh, to authorize the execution of this uh, contract and I'll be glad to address any questions. And once again, the two chiefs are here to also address the council if if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Neese. Do any members of the council have a question or comment?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, Gary, did you address uh? We don't have formal agreements for mutual aid with Scottsdale and Daisy Mountain might be out of the pack. I asked a question at the joint meeting of the Public Safety Committee and the council back a month or two ago. What criteria has changed as to whether these other fire departments will respond on mutual aid call? Can you explain that?
Uh, yeah, I I can't explain why Scottsdale canceled their agreements. That they they explained in that other meeting that they had concerns of liability with dealing with Rural Metro. I don't know what that liability is. Mutual uh, aid is universal throughout the state, throughout the nation. Any small community does not have enough resources to provide. The entire fire department for their needs for a catastrophic event. They work together. That's what mutual aid is about. I have a document in in my file here that I can pull out. It's done by the fire chiefs of Arizona. The second page of it speaks of neighbor helping neighbor. That's all it says. That's what mutual aid is about.
Can we expect that? We have, we need a mutual aid call and we're responsible?
So um, Chief Sol can can articulate uh, that he has had. A uh, he was down at the Scottsdale meeting. He asked the city council and Chief Shannon. Will you respond in a time of need? And Chief said, yes. Obviously, the the resources have to be available, but life safety issues, yes, they would respond. And in the past, they have always responded. So I don't know of any instance where they they have not responded. Mutual aid agreements in the past were arrangement for fee reimbursement. It wasn't if they would respond. It was a compensation plan to offset the financial liability of response from an adjacent agency. That's what they were about.
Chief? Um, Mr. Neese, you know, I said that very, very uh, like, we're mayor, right, here in council. Uh, I think it's also important to emphasize two things. One, that the. Uh, question was directed to the council and city administrator in in Scottsdale. And the confirmation and commitment came from the council that in in times of need. That if resources were available, they would certainly assist uh, the best security. The mutual aid agreement prior, again, prior to my arrival, I'm guessing probably prior to September of twenty twenty-one. Was a fee for service and so having contrary to to one of the statements earlier. Um, there was no subsidization of the automatic aid system. Uh, our our of of Carefree's fire and emergency services by automatic aid. Uh, Rural Metro paid for any time that uh, a resource came to us and it was relatively infrequent over a course. Of many years, you know, the the numbers were very, very frequently. Uh, those numbers are available. I am working with that. But the commitment to provide resources and banks of life safety and truly was made by the council uh, in in Scottsdale. It's also been confirmed and committed to be by some of my discussions with the life saving folks in the life saving council. That again, if there's a county unincorporated area and a call comes in for services, a life safety. Life at uh, safety at risk, there's a structured fire, working fires, you know, that the automatic aid partners in any city will come. Uh, to assist during that time and if there's another organization such as Rural Metro. Who uh, you know, has some responsibility to cover in those areas, then they, after that life safety. Uh, criteria has been has been brought, go and draw and leave that responsibility to to Rural Metro. So uh, the other thing that I just want, since I'm, since I'm up here, what I do want to say about it. You know, Rural Metro is committed to supporting Carefree and its citizens regardless of whatever direction you choose to go. We we truly want to be supportive to meeting, helping you meet the life safety needs of your community. In whatever way you decide, because that's that's your responsibility um, to your citizens and ultimately the citizens. Uh, desire uh, for the level of service they they would require or or would desire. Um, we'll support whatever transition and that that those processes that Mr. Neese went through, uh, set. That being said, you know, I'm still working with the automatic aid system um, to to gain included. And I'm also working with uh, the neighboring partners uh, to establish, you know, some type of mutual aid agreement. That will be equitable. And that was the term that was used in Scottsdale was that there should be an effort to work towards a a more equitable. Mutual aid agreement. And so whatever that that term looks like, whatever that type, the form of that agreement looks like. You know, we'll certainly work towards maybe those happen. Uh, again, I'm. Trying to uh, establish those communications, you know, not only with uh, Daisy Mountain. Um, and with Scottsdale and just with Phoenix as well.
But chief, for the reassurance of our citizens, it's safe to say that in a time of need. First responders from outside of Carefree will respond.
Yes.
Thank you.
I want to thank your organization and you as individuals for your professionalism. I mean, there are some organizations I'm familiar with who with the possibility of losing it may have just said, forget it, I'm out of here. But you're hanging in there with us. You're providing the same high level of service and working with us. As we work towards solutions on this. So thank you.
But also, you know, I'm a fire fighter. This unfortunately become with the size of process. And foods or uh, the effects of it. That's that's unfortunate. Automatic aid systems, basic systems, Scottsdale's a great fire department as is Daisy Mountain. Um, and I do believe at the end of the day, we're all part of this. And in case we, we're close to coming together and put out a fire or figure, figure a emergency. We'll come together. We'll deal with the issue ahead and then we'll fight each other out.
Thank you. Okay, that's item number eight. We have to. Approve resolution two thousand twenty-two dash ten. Authorizing the execution of the contract entitled Fire Protection and Emergency Medical Services Agreement. Between the town of Carefree and the Rural Metro Corporation. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-two dash ten, authorizing the mayor to execute the contract. By title Fire Protection and Emergency Medical Services Agreement between the town of Carefree and Rural Metro.
Is there a second? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all. Thank you all for coming. Item number nine, adjournment. Second, motions are made. All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a nice evening.